I'd like to call to order a meeting of City Council for January 13th, 2025. Clerk Swoop, can you take the role?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Palavanaglu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor. There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Do we have anyone that wishes to remember somebody tonight? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of January 6th and the corrected proceedings from October 28th of 2024.
Vice President Carter.
I would like to move the January 6th of 2025 minutes as presented and the October 28th, 2024 minutes as presented.
We have a proper motion in place. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
And we are to the consideration of late items.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend Council Rule Number 9 and to add the issuance of sewage disposal system revenue bonds that was discussed today in Committee of the Whole.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Are there any further questions or discussion on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, that will be added under resolutions for action, and we are to special ceremonies and presentations. Our first is a tribute in recognition of the Greater Lansing Area Holiday Commission, Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration.
Yes, I would like to ask all the MLK Commission if you could please join me in the well. So, resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing has a resolution in play, whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan will host its 40th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Celebration on January 20th, 2025, with a theme "I Have a Dream That One Day This Nation Will Rise Up and Live Out the True Meaning of Its Creed." We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. Whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan focuses on addressing pressing issues such as literacy, youth violence, mentoring, education, and community enrichment through a variety of programs, initiatives, and events fostering positive social change. Whereas this year's keynote speaker is Dr. Bernard Lafayette Jr., a trailblazer of the civil rights movement and a lifelong advocate for nonviolence. So now therefore may it be resolved that the Lansing City Council celebrates the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan for a continued dedication and service to our youth and residents of the City of Lansing, and wish them the best of luck on uplifting this celebration. Be it resolved that the City of Lansing commemorates the efforts that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. encourages all residents of the City of Lansing to share in Dr. King's dream and work towards justice, goodwill, and brotherhood for all people. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
We have a proper motion in place. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations. And if anyone would like to speak?
Thank you, Vice President Carter. To Mayor Shore and President Cost and this great body behind me, and to the citizens of Lansing, we are glad to be here on behalf of our Chair, Elaine Hardy, who is absent 40 years in the making. I'm not going to be redundant and say what she just said because that's what I was going to say. But 40 years, I think many of us can remember going to the Lansing Civic Center and celebrating this luncheon. And so now that we will be at the Lansing Center, we are very happy that this is going to be probably one of our biggest and baddest events that we've ever done in 40 years. So we are very pleased and we thank you so much for supporting us. Thank you to the City of Lansing and really the Mid-Michigan area for being a part. I do want to recognize the Commissioners behind me, Lonnie Lee, Nicole, sorry, I'm sweating, Nicole, Noel Williams, Smilliana Williams, Kelly S. Wertz-Etchison, Tristan Wright, and Mayor Ron Bacon, former mayor, excuse me, and of course, Dr. Lee June. We thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity to be here with you. Thank you.
Next, we have the 2025 City Council Committee assignments by President Cost.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Swoop. I'm going to read off into the record the 2025 Lansing City Council Standing Committee Board Commission assignments. Committee of the Whole will be Ryan Cost, chairperson, Tamarra Carter, vice chair. Committee on Personnel will be Tamarra Carter for chair, Ryan Cost, vice chair, Brian T. Jackson, member, and Trinny Penny-Vonaglu for member. City Operations will be Jeff Brown as chair, Peter Spatafor as vice chair, Jeremy Garza as member. The Committee on Development and Planning will be Jeremy Garza as chair, Adam Hussein as vice chair, Ryan Cost as member. Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Brian T. Jackson will be chair, Peter Spatafor vice chair, and Tamarra Carter, member. We have Committee on Municipal Audit, which is to be determined. Committee on Public Safety will be Trinny Penny-Vonaglu as chair, Adam Hussein as vice chair, and Ryan Cost as member. Committee on Ways and Means will be Adam Hussein as chair, Jeremy Garza as vice chair, Peter Spatafor as member. And then the ad hoc Audit Committee, which will dissolve 9/1 of 25 or earlier, has Peter Spatafor as chair, Tamarra Carter as vice chair, and Trinny Penny-Vonaglu as member. The 2025 Councilmember Boards and Commission assignments for outside of City Council Capitol Area Michigan Works, Admin Board will be Councilmembers Penny-Vonaglu, Cost, and Carter. Capital Region Airport Authority will be Councilmember Spatafor. The City of Lansing and Charter Township of Lansing Liaison Commission will be Councilmember Penny-Vonaglu. Community Corrections Advisory Board will be Councilmember Cost. Downtown Lansing, Inc. will be Councilmember Spatafor. Employee Retirement will be Councilmember Garza. Police and Fire Retirement will be Councilmember Garza. The Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority will be Councilmember Jackson. The Planning Commission will be Councilmembers Cost and Hussein. Tri-County on Aging Consortium Board will be Councilmembers Cost and Penny-Vonaglu. And Tri-County Regional Planning Commission will be Councilmembers Hussein, Penny-Vonaglu, and Spatafor. And I would like to also add into the record, in creating this list this year, I have worked with these folks for two years, my colleagues up here, and they all have a passion for where they ended up on this list, and we really wanted to make a list that reflected this council's desire to be of service to this community and do it in the best way that we possibly can.
Okay, we are to comments by Councilmembers and the City Clerk.
Councilmember Hussein.
I want to first thank folks that came out to our Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting this past Saturday at the Alfreda Schmidt Southside Community Center. It was very well attended. Special thanks to Ingham County Treasurer, Alan Fox, County Commissioners, Thomas Morgan, as well as Miles Johnson. We also had our leadership team there, Mr. Ryan Cost and Mrs. Tamarra Carter. And then also our Neighbored Resource Coordinator, Robin Anderson King, was out there. And so we were talking about a number of different things, ballot initiatives that passed last fall, ballot initiatives that failed, what that might look forward, or looked like, sorry, moving forward with regard to county efforts and things of that nature. We had, I thought, a great presentation from our leadership team in terms of their vision, really for kind of delivering on all the things that we need to deliver on this year, how that's going to take place, committee structure, those types of things. And then also, Robin Anderson King, as always, did a great job talking about neighbored grants and different ways that her department can support that process as we move forward. That being said, I also wanted to announce our next constituent contact meeting that will take place February 8th, so it's a Saturday, February 8th at 10:00 a.m. This will actually be a joint meeting with myself and Councilman Garza. So we will be at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall, that's at 5405 South MLK. We do have a few special guests that are going to attend. We have Dick Pefley to talk about the South Lansing Reinforcement Transmission Project, as well as Mr. Andy Shore, I do believe, will be there as well. So our mayor will be there to talk about things from his office as well. We have a Southwest Action Group meeting tomorrow. This is a quarterly meeting, so that's January 14th at 6:00 p.m., and that is at 2101 West Holmes Street, which is the Southside Community Coalition. Again, with it being a quarterly meeting, there's a lot of ground to cover. So I hope folks that have been involved in the work of the Southwest Action Group or would like to participate in the work of the Southwest Action Group, certainly hope folks find a way to get out there. Again, that's tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. The Luton Rich Neighbored Association, they are meeting this Thursday, January 16th, first meeting of 2025. That is at 2901 West Mount Hope, which is the Mayflower Congregational Church. Again, that's the Luton Rich Neighbored Association. And then lastly, I wanted to announce the Juvenile East South Lansing meeting for this month. It's a big one. It's their 10-year anniversary. And so they're going to, in addition to, I believe Ryan Cost as president of the body will be there. I also believe that there will be a presentation from Lansing Police Department. But I think they're really hoping to kind of reflect back on the work of this particular group over the past 10 years, celebrate some of the accomplishments, but then also really focus on and prioritize the work ahead. And so I really hope folks can get out to that meeting. Again, that is January 28th at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfreda Schmidt Southside Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Penny-Vonaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. To add to the slew of invitations and constituent meetings that we have coming up, I just wanted to announce once more that the At-Large members will be holding a constituent contact meeting on Saturday, January 25th. This is the first meeting that we've held as At-Large members for constituent contact, and we are excited to do so throughout 2025. You will find us quarterly. We'll have one meeting in each ward. Our first meeting of January will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Moneyball Sportswear Headquarters, 927 West Saginaw Street in Lansing. Refreshments will be provided, there is accessible parking, and we look forward to connecting with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none.
Okay, we have no announcements, so we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Okay. I am Nicholas Zanny. I am the president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association. Is this thing on? Okay. I would like to inform everyone that the, that on Wednesday, the old January 15th, this Wednesday, we will have our monthly Old Everett Neighborhood meeting at 6:30 at the Village Lansing. We still need to elect a few board members, and we will be discussing our neighborhood grants, as well as certain disappearance of Amber Arnett that actually occurred within our neighborhoods. So feel free to attend. Again, it's going to be at 3525 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, that is the Village Lansing, and I hope that to see people attend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? All right, seeing none. Now is the time that if you wish to address the City Council on any legislative matter, we need you to sign in in the back, and we will, with that, we are to the mayor's announcements.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few quick things. One, I am excited that our HRCS will be holding their MLK event this Thursday, the 16th, this Thursday, here in Chambers, so thank you to council, and that's a great program every year. Our Board of Water and Light is hosting two Bright Idea Series customer open houses, one on January 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Foster, and the other at February 7th from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Alfreda Schmidt Community Center. The purpose of these events is to help customers who have concerns about their bill or are having a hard time understanding their bill, and they'll be doing a how-to-read-your-bill presentations and have customer service representatives on hand to discuss individuals' bills. So thank you to the BWL for doing that. Our facade, for all those out there, our facade applications open today, and they close the mid-March. This is the, the pre-application closes mid-March, and then people can work through their applications, and then the final application closes March 31st. As a reminder, my budget and this body passing the budget approved $175,000 to go towards facade for many of our businesses and others on our corridors to show the vibrancy of our city. So I hope businesses will apply and councilmembers will spread the word, as I know you always do, and I appreciate. Our HRCS grants are due by tomorrow, so anyone that is a neighborhood or, not a neighborhood, anyone that is a group that is applying for the basic human needs, dollars, please apply by tomorrow. And finally, I actually have an exciting announcement. We have not yet announced this, so this is the first, although USDOT announced it, but I think many people missed it. As I know many in this body and many in the audience know, we have applied for the last two rounds of what's called the Reconnecting Communities Grant, which is the grant that recognizes that we basically eliminated traditionally African-American neighborhoods in order to build 496 in the 1950s, and under the bipartisan infrastructure law, there are dollars that are there to recognize that and help communities do projects to make up for that. We have applied twice now to do, get a planning grant to cap parts of 496 in recognition, and then put things on that in recognition of this displacement. We were not successful twice, but we found out in the last few days that we were successful in this round. So the US Department of Transportation is granting the City of Lansing a million dollars for planning to go through all of the technical pieces. Director Kilpatrick is involved and will be working through a lot of this along with our grants folks. And then once we are able to utilize that and create a plan in conjunction with the public and City Council and everyone else, then we'll move forward for what we call a build grant to try and get the rest of the money to do something on that area. So we look forward to hearing comments, and we'll put information out to the public along with USDOT. We have to finalize contracts and things like that, but it's good news. It's good news that we can move forward this effort, and we look forward to working with the community and City Council on this, and we'll be coming to you with the, with the resolution to accept the funds soon, I hope. We want to accept them as soon as possible. So that's what I've got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Shore.
All right, and President Cost, with your indulgence, I did forget one important announcement. It is a new term at school, so with that, we have a new intern assisting us with the City Council meeting, so please join me in welcoming Haley Reinhardt as our lovely assistant. And with that, we are to public comment on legislative matters, which includes Items 6 through 12, plus the late item, and we do have one public hearing as part of that. Item 6, Amending Chapter 206, Preference for Local Bidders.
With regards to the amending of Chapter 206, preference for local bidders, we do have an ordinance on the books that deals with purchasing, it deals with procurement of construction services, and essentially what it does is it allows Lansing-based bidders to match any lowest qualifying bid on a contract between $15,000 and $1 million. And so this does a couple of things. Number one, it eliminates that cap of $1 million, and it also builds on a little bit that definition of a local bidder to actually include, well, at least when there's not a Lansing-based primary bidder. It allows a bidder that is using or can demonstrate that they're going to use subcontractors positioned here in the City of Lansing to actually match that lowest qualifying bid. So it just builds on that a little bit. And the spirit of this is to, as best we can, to get Lansing laborers and obviously some of these subcontractors to work right here in the City of Lansing, and so that's what this does.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hussein.
Okay, we are to the public comment. First, we have Nicholas Zandy.
Hello there. You already know my name and where I'm from, and I'm going to be speaking on item number 12, and that is the, another trash fee, which I'm pretty sure is on Washington Avenue, which is, which actually goes right through my neighborhood, so yay. You know, you know I'm being sarcastic on that, but in all seriousness, frankly, I am just infuriated that we have to keep going through these same things. Red tag, red tag, red tag, trash fee, trash fee, trash fee, like on these, on these properties, like this is just, this is just infuriating, like all this just keeps happening, and we have to keep seeing all this stuff on the agenda, all because we have irresponsible landowners, as well as a government that hasn't been really doing really much to stop stuff like this from happening, like all that trash, like stop all the trash from piling up and, or their properties from going into the t- like, why aren't you doing something to prevent this before it escalates to this point? Like, this is really getting annoying, like this has just become a routine. It's like, people don't take care of their properties, and city looks the other way, oh, turns out it's causing trouble, and it's polluting this environment, and it's causing, and it's making the neighborhood just straight up unlivable. As a neighborhood leader, I am just infuriated that we have so many properties, including in my own neighborhood, that have red tags on them and have an intense amount of trash and filth around them to a point where they have to pay, where people are fined through several insanely high trash fees. Like, do something about this before something like this escalates. Like, if it's just a random homeowner, like at least assist them before they, they have a red tag, and if this is a landlord, I would say you gotta hold them accountable for making their properties just straight up unlivable. Either their property is significantly damaged, or we have an insane high amount, insanely high amount of trash, that means they have to pay a high fine in trash fees. This really needs to stop, and the city really needs to get their act together, and so do property owners. That's all I'm going to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. That was our final speaker, so we are to the referral of the public hearing.
That'll, excuse me. Sorry, sorry, that'll be referred to City Operations. Remember which one it was coming from.
All right. Then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would like to approve the consent agenda as written, with seven already being taken care of, but we also have a tribute in recognition of the City Human Relations and Community Service Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Observance, setting the public hearing on February 10th on the noise special permit, Lebat and Stark Excavating, Inc., and affirmation of current council standing committees pursuant to Council Rule 16.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
And we are to resolutions for action. Item 11, Council Rules, amend Rule 16, and once the motion is made, this must lie over until at least the next council meeting per your rules, can't be voted on tonight.
All right, so Vice President Carter.
I move the council rules, amend Rule 16.
And we will place those on file.
We'll just hold them here on the council, yes. Item 12, Claim Disposition.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a interesting one, where there was a lady who was renting from a landlord, and she had some carpet outside and something else outside. She also had her heirloom dresser that was covered in the back outside. The people from the city came and made a notice that basically said the debris, the carpet, and did not mention the dresser, except in their little notes, they put, for the hauler, they put dresser in the back, but yet they didn't put dresser on the actual notice. So when the city comes, they take the debris, or no, the lady moved the debris and the carpet, but left the dresser because it wasn't on the notice. So when the city comes, or the hauler comes, they notice that the dresser is the only thing left, and they say, they're like, they got the note that said it's there, so they take it away, charge her the administrative fee and the haul fee. We met as a committee, and it was actually Mr. Cost's keen eye that saw that on the hauler notes, it said there was a dresser, but yet it wasn't on the notice. So what we did is we adjusted down for the administrative fee, so it did take $265 off. However, that's what we're voting on, whether we should keep it $265. I am going to vote, can we switch it down? Honestly, I felt bad about this one because she didn't, it wasn't on the notice, they took it away. She was actually mad that her grandma's dresser was gone and all these things, even though there was questions, why would you keep it outside in a tarp, and that she had answers about, she couldn't lift it and move it, and all these different things for moving in. But I want us to have it where she doesn't pay anything, because she did move the carpet and stuff from her move-in projects, but had she known about the dresser, she said she would have took care of that, but only our hauler knew about it, and that just doesn't seem right. So can I, is it a motion I would make?
Yes.
I would make a motion to amend this to also take off the hauler fee because of what I mentioned.
So we have a motion to amend this to forgiving the entire claim?
Yeah, so it would be zero instead of owing 300.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Joe, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Are we talking about 12?
Yes, sir.
Mine says 565.
Correct. On this, it does. On the resolution, it explains the reduction. It shows that we reduced it by $265 to be a grand total of 300, which was the cost of the hauler, which the city did incur that cost. The 265 was the administrative fee on our EDP side.
Correct. So now we're going from the 565 minus the 265 to 300, and then his motion is to make the 300 zero.
It is essentially to make it- It is essentially to make it zero, yes.
So if we approve this, then an up or down vote for the claim would, if it was zero, would be yes or no? How would that look? If that, does that make sense, the question, President?
Yes. So a yes vote would reduce this to zero. The appeal would be granted for, in the amount of $0, correct? City Attorney?
There's a motion to amend the resolution in front of the council first. If the council votes yes on the motion to amend the resolution, the resolution would be amended to say, the total claim is granted, so essentially, there would be a zero fee. And then the question would be called whether to pass the resolution with a zero fee. Or to essentially grant in full. Correct.
Councilman Brown.
So then if, the second vote was my question, if you vote no, then what is that result?
We would go back to the original, the original amendment or resolution, correct?
So let's assume, I apologize, Mr. President. So if we assume we voted yes on the amendment to zero fee, and then that's accomplished, and then the second vote, if we voted no, what would that result turn into?
Well, you would accept the motion that was just made, and then we would vote on that as a resolution of $0. And if you voted no, then, now, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, we would go back to the original, or there would be the full amount?
If the resolution failed, if the resolution as amended to be a full grant of the appeal, if that fails, then the claim appeal would fail, and the total 565 would be due.
Okay. So the total amount would be due.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Councilman Spatafor?
I think Councilman Brown cleared up the confusion I was having, but I also, I think you made the point. I just want to clarify, too. These aren't city fees that we, that we're just assessing. These are actual fees the city has incurred for services provided. So denying, moving it to zero means that money comes out of city coffers, just for clarification. I think you said that, and I wanted to underline that point. Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I just want to drive home the fact that what the committee did was because we did incur that 300, we thought, we saw fit essentially to keep that in place, but because there were some issues with the admin, $265 seems like a lot. We know that actually is about the cost of administering this ordinance. But when things are not done correctly, we had, you know, we have a difficult time, obviously, charging that 265, so that's where that came from. And just about every base was covered in what we just talked about, except, Councilman Brown, what happens if the motion to adopt the amendment fails, then what we'll do is we'll take a second vote on the resolution as presented originally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. All right. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Brown.
And thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Hussein, to that point, in the committee then, because it sounds like you guys are amicable to a zero fee, or, because I'm, to make sure I understand, please, thank you.
So during the committee, we were comfortable reducing the city portion of it, which was the administrative costs the EDP incurs, not the other portion, which is the contractor coming out, what they charge the city, which in turn would be charged to the citizens of the city.
So was that fee for this dresser in question, or was it for the other?
The fee was for all of the trash. This was one violation with multiple things.
She picked up everything except the dresser, which was not on the notice. However, the dresser was on the hauler's notice, where the city says, oh, by the way, there's a dresser in the back. But yet, it named carpet and some other debris, which is not a dresser, and that was her problem, because she cleaned up the things that were on the notice. Had she seen the dresser, she would have likely cleaned it up, too.
So that would be my question. If the dresser was not on that note, where it seems like we made a mistake, would we have incurred that additional fee from the hauler? If she removed everything, to her understanding, it would have been no additional $265? Or was it because they went out there, there was, she removed the debris except for this dresser, and then that's what the $265 cost came from?
Yeah. So Councilman Brown, the 265 was because they put on that trash hauler specifically the dresser. I would think that, and we felt, it was reasonable to believe that a dresser in your driveway is not an appropriate space for it. So we did grant partial relief, again, for the 265, but there was still the outstanding 300 we incurred as a city. Councilman Spatafor?
I also remember that the letters do state that any violation found on the property when they return to collect will be enforced as according to law that we've adopted.
Yes. Councilman Hussein.
And maybe I misunderstood. If, the way the contract is written, if our contractor goes out to abate, and in the interim, right, between us going out rechecking the property, and then actually them getting out there, it's marked as a DBO, done by owner, and there is no essentially cost incurred by the city, because there's no work done.
Thank you. Yes, that's what I was asking, Councilman Hussein, because if originally, based on the testimony here, that if it was on the original note, and the person did remove all three items, then it would not have been additional, it wouldn't have been a hauler cost, because it would have been removed by the owner. And that, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilwoman Patty Vonaglu.
Thank you. I'm sorry to belabor this point. Can you provide clarity? Was there anything else hauled away besides this dresser from the property, or is the dresser the only thing that was hauled away, and that's where the costs were incurred?
I believe there was some carpet.
The resident had moved those other items, and those were not hauled?
Yes, that's correct. It was only the dresser, which she's most upset about, that was hauled away. The other things that were noted on the notice, the only things that were noted on the notice were taken care of by her. She says, I'm a country girl, I moved to the city, I didn't know we couldn't have that, and I got my notice, so I just cleaned that up, and I thought I was good. And then, next thing I know, they took the dresser and charged and all those things, and then she appealed it.
Councilmember Hussein.
And I know that probably sounds like a lot of $300, but the way the contract works, and the only way you're ever going to get somebody to bid on a contract like this, is that the absolute lowest fee that can be incurred is one, is for essentially one hour of labor and three cubic yards. So this, that 300 is actually the lowest amount that someone can incur. So if you're, if they're out there for 45 minutes, and there's a dresser, then they, we are charged essentially that one hour of labor at three cubic yards a waste.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. So this will be on a motion to accept the amendment from Councilman Jackson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Can we get a roll call vote?
Certainly. On the amendment. Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
No.
Councilmember Palli Vonaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor. Four yays, three nays, the amendment is adopted. On an amendment, four, three passes, I believe. For final passage, it takes five votes for an amendment. It takes majority of those here.
All right. Councilman Jackson.
Well, I don't know if I'm able to have a reconsideration, but it sounds like I would move the amended resolution. Only problem is, is that if it doesn't get five, then she gets all her things, so I guess this is how it goes.
We have a proper motion in place. Councilman Spatafor?
Oh, never mind. I was just going to move to reconsider the motion by which the previous motion passed.
Councilman Brown.
I would just say that, you know, I've been consistent with, you know, I know we're talking about, you know, a few hundred dollars, and we aren't, you know, have incurred the cost, but if we made a mistake, I just don't think it's fair. And so that's why I'm supporting, you know, the zero fee. Now, if there wasn't a mistake that you guys identified that we made as a city, then, of course, if we have any fees, you know, as taxpayer dollars, we need to make sure that people reimburse the city. But in this case, you know, from the testimony, you know, we made a mistake, there was one, and we saw a response that what we thought we were supposed to clean up, we, you know, the individual did. And so that's why I'm supporting this, and I hope, you know, that you all would, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oppose? It was, yeah.
So the resolution fails, and we are to the late item, which is a bond authorization for the wet weather control program.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, this late item was shared at the Committee of the Hole earlier today on the issuance of sewage disposal system revenue bonds. So in short, it looks like there is just an amendment, or not amendment, excuse me, but, let me just make sure I have my notes right, for the wet water control program continuing with their next phase on the project for 2025. So I make the motion.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this late item? Councilman Spatafor?
Could you, I didn't hear, what's the reason it was a late item?
Vice President Carter.
The, let's see, the, the issuer had requested and gave it to the council a little late, and they wanted to make sure that the revenue bond was in play, but that was all the information that I received.
Okay. I just, it was on cow, but not on, okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any further questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you would like to sign in to speak, you are required to sign in if you wish to speak. And we'll give you another minute to sign in with Haley in the back, if you have not done so already. And in the meantime, we are to reports of officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by council, or President, Council President Cost.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
From the City Clerk, Minutes, and Boards and Commissions.
Place on file.
From the Mayor, Investment Policy.
Committee of the Hole, Internal Auditor.
The appointment of Christopher Harkins to the Board of Water and Light.
Committee of the Hole.
Appointment of Shelby Freyer to the Lansing Entertainment Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners.
Committee of the Hole.
Appointment of John Scott to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Public Safety.
Appointment of Emily, reappointment of Emily Linden to the Potter Park Zoo Board.
City Operations.
Reappointment of Don Sober to the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and Planning.
And Act Eight of 2024, easement for use of Rightaway on South Washington and West Lenway for the Ovation Center for Music and Arts.
Committee of the Hole.
Communications and Petition. We have three notices from the Liquor Control Commission, one related to STD and SDM licenses at 3330 South Cedar Street, one related to SDM license at 3330 South Cedar Street, and the other is Class C and an SDM at 1825 North Grand River Avenue.
City Operations.
And we have 26 communications in support of the Coalition to Preserve Eastern High School and Promote Mental Health.
Place on file.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to move the, to excuse Councilmember Garza.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Remarks by council members.
Are any further remarks? Seeing and hearing none.
Remarks from the mayor. Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First, we have Ashley Rogers, followed by Deandra Westfall. Ashley, can you step up to the mic? And you have up to three minutes to address City Council.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ashley Rogers, and thank you for all letting me speak here today. I didn't know I was going to be the first one for this matter, but I am the owner of Sedona Wanderlust Boutique, which was actually a store that was a part of the Middle Village program that was funded and began by the Downtown Lansing, Inc. And I'm here to speak about my experience with it. I'm just going to keep it as brief as possible. My experience with the program unfortunately was a very distasteful experience. And on paper, it seems that this program is supposed to uplift and empower small businesses, especially minority-owned businesses, and unfortunately, we were denied any of that type of representation. We were not given any of the resources that we need, such as basic things such as Wi-Fi. We were located inside of the atrium building, which is downtown, which was unbeknownst to a lot of people, that did not know that this building absolutely existed, which was very distasteful for us to even be moved into that building. As a result, we were left to fend for ourselves. We encountered several instances, not just the Wi-Fi, but also being harassed by the lawyers that are in the upstairs area of the atrium. We also each had our own financial burdens, myself included. Some of the financial burdens, we were harassed to do various fluctuations of rent every single month. There were meetings that we would have with the SBDC that were told that they would give us the resources that we needed to have a successful business. None of those things were given to us. Again, we were taught to fend for ourselves. Things that we were not taught, we were told to Google. These were words that were, that came out of the mouth of our coordinator, which was Julie Reinhardt. She was the person that recruited all of us, including myself. I was a part of the program from April of last year up until August, and my reasons for leaving, those are just the tip of the iceberg. I felt like my business, and also other minority businesses, we were just seen as being tokenized. We were just simply put into place to be the faces of, to show that this program was supposed to help minority businesses. None of that was given to us. We were just pushed to the back. Any meetings or events that we had, it was the same small circle of people. We were not given opportunities to learn about how to run a business. We were not given any resources on how to do these things, and we were also given what I would call fear mongering, stating that DLI and Middle Village were the end-all and be-all of any success that we would have, which is very intimidating, to the point where it was even nerve-wracking to come and speak. So that's what I have to say for my experience, just a tip of the iceberg for what I have to go through. So just wanted to say that tidbit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deandra Westfall, followed by Fawn Donald and something, Prosnavec.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Westfall, and I am the owner of Nature's 92. I'm here to speak on my experience with DLI. I was in the second cohort of the Middle Village. My experience was distasteful. I can't sum it up in three minutes, so I'm here to stand in solidarity with my fellow business owners and express that Downtown Lansing deserves a chance. I love small business. I've lived here my whole entire life, and seeing downtown the way it is currently is heartbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fawn Donald, followed by Liz Kruger.
We are Fawn and Luke, the former owners of Niva Lease, a small business that operated in Downtown Lansing for three years. In early 2022, at the urging of Julie Reinhardt of Downtown Lansing, Inc., with written assurance and commitment of funds, we relocated our business to Washington Square. With Julie taking part in negotiations, we signed a With Julie taking part in negotiations, we signed a lease, but the full funds were never provided. We followed up repeatedly with DLI for almost two years. At the end of 2023, we were informed by Julie's supervisor, Kathleen Edgerly, that the remaining funds had been absorbed into a separate MEDC reimbursement grant that we were awarded in early of 2023. This grant was also awarded to more than 20 other businesses downtown. Even more concerning, Kathleen admitted she was unaware of many prior communications between her staff and us about these promised funds. The relocation process became a series of escalating challenges. The building we leased had multiple issues that were to be addressed by the landlord prior to move in, as outlined in our lease. During the next two years, we worked tirelessly to hold our landlords to their lease obligations, to address issues with DLI and to find support navigating these challenges. Unfortunately, the lack of accountability left us to shoulder the burden of hazardous conditions and significant financial strain. Code violations and the inability to fully activate the space for growing our business ultimately forced us to vacate downtown. We repeatedly reached out to DLI for support. Their assistance was inconsistent at best, leaving us to feel abandoned in times of need. This experience highlights many incompetencies, gross negligence and systemic issues within DLI. We urge the city council to take action by reevaluating DLI's impact to downtown based on hard facts and feedback of their performance, despite the millions of dollars that passes through their hands. Considering they are an entity in place to foster growth and sustainability of downtown, their operations should prioritize support and advocacy in favor of small businesses instead of a hands off approach that favors the property owners. We urge stricter oversight of landlords and code enforcement with meaningful penalties for non compliance. By addressing these issues, DLI can provide tangible support to businesses and drive positive change. If they are incapable of this, wouldn't be better suited to implement a true DDA with forced transparency and accountability staffed by those qualified in economic development. Our story is not unique and we shared it to give insight to issues and struggles faced by downtown businesses so that these things do not happen to others. Since sharing our story along with our truthful documentation and details, we have been threatened with libel by DLI's lawyers. On top of the struggles we faced for years and thousands of dollars we lost, we now have the added fear looming over us of a lawsuit by the city. After having to vacate our business and leave downtown, we now face added stress of possibly losing our home and suffering even more financial damage and strife than we can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Liz Kruger, followed by Amara Hadi.
Hello, my name is Liz. Thank you so much for having me here today. I am here to speak about my experience with Downtown Lansing, Inc., as well as the Middle Village. I have been a resident of the city of Lansing my entire life, 33 years. And my whole life, I figured what can I do to make my city that raised me better, to make the city better? Throughout my childhood, teenage, early twenties, I finally decided bakery, a board game cafe, a place where people can just come and hang out late at night. Julie Reinhardt found us through a mutual person that we knew that was in the Middle Village program during the second cohort. And she had offered us essentially a space downtown, not specifically a Middle Village, but an actual place to lease. With that, she talked with Lake Trust in order to be able to get us a loan, which we were originally denied for on the assumption that we were going to be getting a $50,000 reimbursement grant in order to pay the loan back, which is why we were then approved for said loan. Turns out, we were not able to get the place that we wanted to lease. And from there, Julie didn't know what to do and she offered us a space in the Middle Village, even though a bakery does not quite succeed there. We signed the contract to be there from March 1st until February, March 1st of 2023 through February 11th of 2024. And we were not allowed to even begin to set up in there until the month of July. Per the contract, we had then missed four months of time to be able to sell, interact with the community and get our name out there. On top of that, what was direct, what was addressed in our contract, we never received anything. We did not have one on one weekly meetings. All of the SBDC ran meetings that we had were information that my husband and I had already received from talking to the SBDC for many years beforehand. And we were just kind of left there to sit and try to figure out what to do in this tiny little space that we were sharing with three other businesses at the time. Moving forward, we ended up having to leave 10 days early from our contract. And pretty much right on the day of when we were accepted into Middle Village, we got a notice that Lake Trust was taking us to court for non payment of the loan. So because of this entire ordeal, not only does my husband have to file for bankruptcy, the our business cannot move forward for many years. And that puts us where we are now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amara Hadi, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening. My name is Amara Hadi, the Lansing based small, or the owner of the Lansing based small business, Hadi Collective. The thrift store that was supposed to be downtown. And I'm speaking about my experience with DLI. It makes me really sad to have to be up here speaking on this topic because just a year ago, I was putting together everything for a store that was a vision in a hustle that I had no doubts or fear in. All six months after I gave birth to my first son at 22 years old. The people who I first met that recruited me into this program were not the people I left knowing. There was a lot of unfulfilled impact that I feel like I was meant to have on the community. I had plans outside of just a business. I wanted to have an impact on not only my local customers, but everybody around me, homeless children, women, everybody in need. I had a vision and I believe it was hindered. What I stand true to be, what I stand true to believe what hindered my small business's experience downtown as I've gone through some things with DLI's program would be we were told we were going to be provided with a space to lease for our business that could perform and function out of. That was not to be found true as we had no ceiling, no wifi, unfinished flooring and leaving a pretty distasteful impression with our grand opening. Leaving us also with limited marketing as we were not allowed to put signage outside. We were not allowed to have anything that welcomed customers into our stores as orders from the landlord. We were led to sign up for programs that were for grants. Working hours outside of our business to help DLI with programs that we weren't really even aware of what we were signing up for. Until we stopped showing up, they seemed pretty upset that we weren't there anymore. The lack of communication with deadlines and marketing and building ordinances such as limitation to events, parking and shopping experiences for people as we're trying to build a shopping community. It seemed to also be a hostile environment for business owners arising with a sweep under the rug with those problems. Business owners were facing conflicts with how they interacted with each other, with landlords, and it seemed almost aggressive and threatening in a lot of situations. All these being related through employees, staff, property managers. And I believe that all these things leading to a business store opening failure was not due to unmet goals, but it was due to unfortunate circumstances that could have been strategically prevented. Thank you guys for having me and the opportunity to speak up here as somebody who was born and raised in Lansing, as a mom, business owner and community member. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Willie Hobbs.
This is going to have to be probably my toughest public comment and that's really saying something. And that has to do with the disappearance of Amber Arnett, as I think recently the Arnetts just celebrated their first birthday without Amber. So I'll speak about what I do know about the disappearance of Amber Arnett. I do know that the last place she was at, I think she was at Dollar Tree in Logan Square. And then I think she went over to Rouse, which was within the Old Everett neighborhood, which is an association that I do run just recently. It's, um, I've, I don't know exactly like the specifics on what happened to her. Either she just skipped town or she was kidnapped or she was and please stay with me on this city TV because this is going to get morbid. She was probably murdered. That I don't know. It, it honestly saddens and infuriates me that the, that I don't think the city's really done much to really resolve this case, or really anyone for that matter. Like just note that there's a Facebook group called Help Us Find Amber. I'm pretty sure it's a public group. You can join it. I'm pretty sure anyone's free to attend it if they're interested in search efforts. There have been rumors that maybe she may have been buried in the woods by Everett High School. I actually did contact Everett. They said it's been searched and no body has been found. Having said that, I want to say this in respect to the family of Amber Arnett. This situation really needs to be resolved and whatever trace of her there is needs to be found so that the family can have answers and can have closure in this situation. Because what happened to Amber is an absolute tragedy and it is an absolute atrocity. Whoever caused the disappearance should face justice for what they did and and they should also have to be, you know, have, receive accordingly some punishments for it. And I don't, well, I don't know if Amber Arnett was a perfect angel by any means. She did not deserve what happened to her. If we think that there may have been a motivation to offer if it was a gang related activity. That's all I'm going to say. Now shall yield the last few seconds of my time.
Thank you. And finally, we have Willie Hobbs.
Hi, everybody down. My name is Willie Hobbs. I live at 1217 Market Creek. I was going to come down and talk about something, but after I heard them young folk they're speaking, it's kind of hard to get ahead in Lansing. I've been in Lansing off and on ever since the first part of the eighties. It looked like everywhere I do, everywhere I turn is a blockage. And I said it before down here. A black person in Lansing, it hardest to get a business going. No matter what you do or how you go by doing it, it's always a stumbling block. In advance, people are going to see that and they're going to realize that. And everybody going to start getting away from here. No matter how you do, how you change your life in Michigan, it looks like it's still a downfall. See? Some people get away with murder and they don't hold consequence against people like they do people with little small charges. What's wrong with us? Pay attention to what we're doing to people. I was down there in that courtroom the other day. Back in the eighties, when I was down there, when I was drinking, I quit drinking in 1995. When I was drinking, the same kind of people that come in the court right today were the kind I was. Same repeat, all this stuff repeating. I'm seeing it right with these eyes. Ain't nobody got to tell me. I leave, go to Chicago, stay a few months, come back in working. Same old thing. Some come up messing with Willie Hobbs. Why? I ain't killing nobody. They got a picking with looking like Willie Hobbs. Wonder what the problem is? Somebody got, got a beef with Willie Hobbs? I'm tired, man. And these young folk, they, some of them don't have a chance. Them people just got up here and spoke. That's why I'm speaking on the matter. It is true, man. 1980, I just said 1985. That, that my lot of years. But they still seen the same thing, no change. Something wrong with them.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. We do have one written communication that I'd like to acknowledge from Elaine Girwa Fishoff related to the appointment of Christopher Hawkins to the Board of Water and Light Board.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned at, oh. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you for recognizing me, President Cost. Just, I wanted to make a comment. I know council member remarks have just passed, but you know, I just want to apologize to all of this testament that I just heard. I've shopped at many of your stores and watched your journeys and it really hurts to hear your experiences. And I'm just, want to say I'm sorry, just as a person. I'm so sorry to hear some of the challenges that you're facing because of the promises and things that you believe are going to be in place. And so I'm sorry as a, all I can do is say that. And then, Mr. President, as council, I think we fund, provide funds to some of these DLI. So if things aren't being done, are we able to, through our audit committee, look at auditing at least where the public dollars are to make sure they're being used for the right reasons and the right, what it was allocated for? Or is it because it's not the city, we're not able to do that?
You should be able to ask for an audit of that with our internal auditor.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned to 808.